Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
I think Corey Drummond is here and he's going to do our invocation. And Judge Chad Flowick will do our pledge of allegiance.
Do we pray or do the pledge first?
Right, pray.
Pray.
Yes.
Am I good right here?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the invitation. It's an honor to pray to the Lord here at the County Commission, so let's bow in prayer. Heavenly Father, eternal God, the only true God, we praise you for who you are. We're thankful for your son, Jesus Christ, who came and lived on our behalf, died in our place, and rose from the grave. God, as my prayer that everyone in this building, Lord, would embrace Christ as Lord and Savior, that repent of their sins and trust him as Lord since he died for our sins. God, we pray, ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight. We pray for the commissioners and all public servants, God, from this level here all the way up. We pray for our nation, God, and those who lead it. We pray for their souls to be saved. We pray for a spirit of revival. We pray for a spirit of reformation and good return to a Judeo-Christian foundation that we were founded upon. We love you, God. We praise you for all that you do. We're thankful for your blessings. Be with us during this time. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Space and flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, approve the minutes of the August 17th, 2021 meeting appropriations, expenditures, personal actions, payroll requisitions, and prove all journal entries to be posted.
Make motion to approve item three.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Four, do we have any public comments or updates? No public comments. We're going to skip from new business down to number seven because of we've got so many folks here in limited seating. A of will be recognition Patricia South retiring after 32 years from the Aleah Drivers' License Division. And it's truly an honor to know Patricia. She looks like she's got a lot of friends here too, a lot of coworkers. So, thank you. And we're going to, the program, I think Rodney Hardy will be the first one to come up and speak in her behalf.
Right there tonight.
Right there.
Thank you, Jeff, and thanks to the County Commission and others for recognizing Trish for her service. Trish, stand right here. Trish, you mentioned, Jeff, put in 32 years for the State of Alabama's Department of Public Safety, Aleah, all with the Driver's License Division, the majority of it right here in the courthouse in Coleman. And I had the opportunity to work with her for 22 of those years, our desk sitting side by side. I don't know how many hours that comes to, it comes to a lot of hours. We never had any problems. We never had any issues or disagreements. I always said, "Yes, ma'am." And, but it's truly an honor to, let me just mention this, and I know that some of the others are going to talk some specifics about some highlights of her career, but let me tell you this, a driver's license examiner has very little idle time. And, you know, in the driver's license office, most everyone here has gone down and been serviced in the driver's license office. We have to implement things that have come down from Montgomery or up from Montgomery as well as Washington. A lot of times, the applicants think that we're the ones that came up with these things and we have to explain them that we're not. Most of the time, when someone comes into the driver's license office, they've got a long wait, and that's just the nature of the beast. And sometimes when that person is in driver's license, the end result is not what they wanted and they're going to have to come back and see us again. And sometime, sometimes when that applicant's in front of us, the wrath can be challenging. And then, of course, our nature is that we want to stomp our feet and get into their face and give them what for. But without exception, the way Trish has always handled those situations is in the most professional way, as a good public servant should handle those situations, as a good examiner should handle those situations, as a believer in Christ should handle those situations without exception. If Webster's wanted to rewrite the definition of public servant, they could just put the name Trish South and they would have it right. I can tell you right now that if there's anything that surpasses her technical expertise on the job, it's her character. Trish, you deserve this retirement. We hope you the best and may God bless you. If I could add one more thing. I'm up in Molton, Decatur, most of the time doing CDLs now. I'm not here. The examiner that's replaced both me and Trish right now, for the most part, by herself. Now, that's soon going to change, is Angela Flowers. Angela, wave your hand. She's very willing, she's very willing, very capable. I want everyone in the courthouse as well as the public to be understanding and patient. If you don't, Matt Gentry, I'm going to summon you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rodney. Patricia, it's an honor to know you. It's an honor to get to know you for all these years. Do we have any other elected officials or anybody here to, Patricia?
Go ahead, if anybody else. Go ahead. I think, I think.
That movie with Great Balls of Fire where Jerry Lee Lewis wanted to close and they fussed and either way, burned his piano and he said, "Follow that big guy" or something. Y'all remember that? That's why I feel like following Rodney Hardy right now. That was an incredibly impassioned speech and I know it was from your heart, so that's what makes it all the more special. So, oftentimes we meet people, I should rest off, and I want to read it to you and everyone else. I'm afraid I'm not quite the speaker that Mr. Hardy is. Oftentimes, we meet people who are gifted with being excellent at their work. Other times, we meet people who are gifted with the ability to engage gracefully with individuals from all walks of life, able to make strangers feel like friends and to calm the nerves of even the most anxious newly-mended 16-year-old. Rarely do we meet someone who does all of these things so very well. Trish South embodies the values that each of us in public service should strive to achieve. Selfless, dedicated, hardworking, and motivated are all adjectives that properly describe Trish. Trish, you've been a constant in the lives of Coleman County Driver's License applicants for over 30 years, 22 of which sitting next to Rodney Hardy. We'll pray for you. Your excellence in your job has been marked many times having been named the State of Alabama's Examiner of the Year on two occasions and the National Examiner of the Year on one occasion. You've proven to be a vital employee for the State of Alabama. Your work ethic has inspired others around you, perhaps without you even realizing your ability to multitask and to conquer new challenges each day will be missed. On behalf of the Coleman County District Court, thank you for your service to this state and congratulations on your retirement. District Judges Rusty Turner and Inchette.
I think, I think Judge Brown, you're going to come up.
That's very hard to follow, both Judge and Rodney. I don't have a long speech to make, but I just, I've known Trish for a long time. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with her. Doing driver's license like we do, we get the people that come to us and then we have to send them to them, and then they come back to us aggravated, so we just had to work all together throughout these years. And it has been an honor and a pleasure both to work with Trish and with Rodney. My office, some of the people here, Kathy, Dana, y'all wait. Y'all get out of this. Wendy, we just appreciate you so much and we don't really want you to retire, but I understand you've got grandchildren that you want to spend a lot of time with. But we, today, we've had a little something for you made. It's just a little plaque that says, "Congratulations on your retirement for 32 years of service and your dedication to Coleman County and to the State of Alabama in 2001." Thank you so much. Okay, over here real quick. There's Kristy. Back into your, thank you for everything you've ever done for us. We really appreciate it so much.
Yes, ma'am. Do you want to step up?
Good evening, everyone. This is a definitely a bittersweet moment because I've been with Trish all 32 years that she's been with me. So, I would like to present a certificate from the State of Alabama. It says, "State of Alabama Certificate of Retirement. Know all persons by these presents that in recognition of the loyal and dedicated performances of duties as an employee of the State of, excuse me, of the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, the foreign sovereign state of Alabama, is indebted to and honors Patricia G. South in appreciation of such service. This certificate of retirement is presented this, the first day of September 2021. Signed, Governor K. Ivey and Secretary Aleah Hatt Taylor." Thank you.
Can we get my first supervisor ever? Come over here. This is Dot Burgess, one of the sweetest supervisors ever.
Well, I can't even say more than what, you know, she was the best examiner ever. I promise you that. I was 27 years and then retired 21 and she still is.
We're going to let John do our recognition of Patricia Coleman County Commission. John, do you mind?
Yes, sir. Congratulations on your retirement, Patricia South. May the blessings of good health, the joy of good friends, a loving family, and the contentment of a job well done fill your life with happiness. Best wishes from all your colleagues and friends at the Coleman County Commission.
Is anybody else?
I've got my license, right? I don't have a presentation, but I would like to say. You wouldn't think the revenue in the Commissioner's office would have much interaction with driver's license, but I think it's a daily occurrence that ever since $36.25 come about, for their change, so we operate with so much cash. But, you know, employees come and go and, you know, a lot of people wants a job with the government because retirement benefits, but you really hardly find somebody that's actually a truly public servant. And I'd like to say that it was a pleasure working, because she did, you know, as far as going out of her way for people, opening up early for people, you know, she'd take a phone call on weekends for questions and I'd like to, are you still a telephone? Rodney don't answer his. I appreciate the time.
Anything else?
Ms. Maxwell?
Ms. Maxwell, yes, yes.
Like I already said, the Circuit Clerk's office, we don't work one-on-one with Trish, but the times that we've worked with her, she has gone above and beyond, like we said, coming in early in the mornings and whatever we've asked of her, and she has been a true public servant and we just appreciate her so much and we are going to initiate, we're still Miss Rodney too, so, but just the two of y'all working together has just been awesome since I've been in office and we've been asking for you to be in together. We just wish you the best. Well, almost grandbabies.
Anybody else?
Hey, I've got one suggestion. In the future, if we ever build another building, let's make sure driver's license is on the entrance floor. Has its own entrance. Most people come in my office and start telling me what they're trying to do and everything. I'm like, "You need to go downstairs." "Downstairs?" I say, "Yes, ma'am, let me show you." "Yes, sir, let me show you." I know y'all deal with a lot of folks.
Appreciate you a lot. Actually, I go way back, Patricia, because I worked for her dad at their store in College and I was in high school.
Sleep on the counter.
Just a few years.
That was just a few years ago.
There wasn't anything going on.
We thank you for your long years of service. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate everybody coming and the, you know, the show of appreciation. I appreciate everybody here and I've worked with some great folks and that's what I miss, is the people, you know. Don't miss the getting up.
Thank you so much.
I make the motion to approve item eight.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. We're going to go back up to number five. Hey, ratify the City of Coleman Abatement for Royal Technologies Expansion by Coleman Economic Development Agency in the amount of $144,576.
You remember that picture I sent you?
I have it. I have it at home. I appreciate it.
One of my granddaughters always told me about that. Thank you.
So sadly, none of those people are here to see me.
You empty the room, bro.
Only 30 more years ago and I could have retired one day. All right. So, the first one's Royal, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So, this is a $2.5 million investment. The abatement is worth $144,000 over the next 10 years. It will create $136,000-plus dollars for our school systems over that same time period. It will also employ 25 new employees. I don't have their salary information at this time. Call us for that, but Royal is known as somebody who takes really good care of their employees. I have no doubt that will be quality jobs. If I remember correctly, this is for unloaded sector production.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve item eight.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. D, ratify the City of Coleman Abatement for Project Connect by Coleman Economic Development Agency in the amount of $2,948.7.
Yes, sir. So, this is a $49 million project we're doing in the city. This is an attempt to recruit this project to our community. So, when it's under a project name, that means that we're not giving, we're not actually giving the tax abatement to the company. We're just promising that if they agree to come to Coleman, that we would give them that as a incentive. So, I do not have any job creation number or anything like that. The information's not been given to me as part of the project. But it will create 200, excuse me, 2.6, really 2.7 million dollars of education revenues for our schools. Like I said, the abatement's only worth 2.9 million over a 10-year period. This is an existing industry project related to a very growing industry. I have no doubt that this project is for the betterment and the growth of the industry.
Thank you so much.
Make motion to approve item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. C, recognition Coleman County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Agency, Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, Coleman Police Department, and Hansville Police Department for their hard work and dedication working through Rock the South and Save America PAC Alabama Trump Rally.
Mr. Chairman, we have several of these recognitions and they say certificate of recognition. This is for the Coleman County Sheriff's Office. In recognition for their hard work and dedication working through Rock the South and Save America PAC Alabama Trump Rally. Do you want to take, go ahead and read each one of them and then?
Yeah, go ahead.
Certificate of recognition Emergency Management Agency, EMA, in recognition for their hard work and dedication working through Rock the South and Save America PAC Alabama Trump Rally. Alabama Law Enforcement, or Aleah, in recognition for their hard work and dedication working through Rock the South and Save America PAC Alabama Trump Rally. The City of Coleman Police Department in recognition for their hard work and dedication working through Rock the South and Save America PAC Alabama Trump Rally. City of Hansville Police Department in recognition for their hard work and dedication working through Rock the South and Save America PAC Alabama Trump Rally.
That thing looks heavy. It must be a Ford.
Yeah. And your phone call. Barry and your phone call.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve item eight.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
D, recognition Brody Hopper and Landon Franks for winning the Mossy Oak Fishing Bassmaster High School Series Classic. Congratulations to the, to y'all young men. Great fishing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read these and then you'll give the presentation. It's a certificate of achievement presented to Brody Hopper in recognition of winning the Mossy Oak Fishing Bassmaster High School Series Classic on Eagle Mountain Lake and Lake Worth in Texas. Certificate of achievement presented to Landon Franks in recognition of winning the Mossy Oak Fishing Bassmaster High School Series Classic on Eagle Mountain Lake and Lake Worth in Texas. Congratulations.
Sorry about that. There's a, there's a reason for that picture. That's my, that's my great nephew. And, I don't know, me and Jeremy, you were, you were fishing tournaments with me when you were, I have, 10 years old, you know? So Jeremy's been a fisherman, a tournament fisherman for years and passed down to Brody and I'm glad I had a little something to do it, but that's the, that's like the World Cup of fishing right there, the BASS national championship. So you guys did some, did some representing Coleman way. Appreciate it.
Make motion to approve item D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. E, recognition Wendell Turner retiring after 10 years from the Coleman County Sun Touching Department.
Mama's a peach. I'm going to get exercising.
I know.
Honor statement today.
This is congratulations on your retirement, Wendell Turner, by the blessings of good health, the joy of good friends, a loving family, and the contentment of, y'all well done. Fill your life with happiness. Best wishes from all your colleagues and friends at the Coleman County Commission. Signed by Chairman Jeff Clemmons, the House Commissioners, Kerry Watson and Kerry Marchman. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve item eight.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. G, recognition Chairman Clemmons for completing Alabama Local Government Training Institute Level 1.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is from the Alabama Local Government Training Institute, which is sponsored by Auburn University and the Alabama Association, the Association of County Commissions of Alabama. Hereby certifies that Jeff Clem Clemmons has completed the legally mandated educational requirements for Alabama County Commissioners in witness thereof. This presentation is made on the 26th day of August 21 and will be presented tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with approval, Adam Lee.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. H. Proclamation Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
We have a proclamation from the commission. Whereas September is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, every fifteen minutes, another American man dies from prostate cancer. That's a little more than ninety-three deaths per day, and thirty-four thousand one hundred and thirty this year. And whereas prostate cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death among men, and whereas in one in eight American men will have prostate cancer during his lifetime, whereas billions of dollars the government spends aiming only four percent goes toward childhood cancer research, and whereas early detection and advances in treatment are saving lives and finding prostate cancer when it's still in the early stage, offers the best hope for living cancer-free for a long time, and whereas the most recent research shows the five-year survival rate for all men with prostate cancer is nearly one hundred percent, and ten-year survival rate is ninety-eight percent, and ninety-six percent for fifteen years. And whereas Prostate Cancer Awareness Month offers all of Coleman County the opportunity to remember the lives taken too soon, honor the survivors, and celebrate progress made in treatment and recovery. Now therefore be it resolved that the Coleman County Commission hereby proclaims the month of September twenty-twenty-one to be Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
Make a motion with approval, Adam Lee.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. I consider approval of North Central Alabama Highway Safety Office Agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is just an annual agreement. It's a federal grant that we get for highway safety. We do it every year, and this is for the current fiscal year. And then soon we'll have one for next fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with approval, Adam Lee.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. J. Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash thirty-four, Carts Third Part Service Contract for FY Twenty-Two.
Yes, thank you for your time. This enables Carts to provide services to agencies like Commissional Aging, Chamber of Commerce, Federal Services, and we just appreciate y'all.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion with approval, Adam J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. K. Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash thirty-five, FY Twenty-Two, FAA Matching Funds for the Coleman County Airport.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two project. Next year's project is on schedule, just as everything else has been over the last several years. It is the next project on our plan. It is the North Apron. So this is a three point seven five million dollar project. It's what's estimated currently. It would be, if everything falls in place like it does, it would be a ninety-five-five grant, ninety percent federal, five percent state, five percent city and county, or local match. So that would be a division of their two and a half percent each from the city and county. So this is the pre-application for that project.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam K.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
L. Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash thirty-six, authorize the chairman to sign construction agreement with the State of Alabama and all related paperwork for strapping and installation of guardrails on Canal Road thirteen oh one from SR three, US thirty-one to Canal Road fourteen thirty-five, project number HRRR twenty-two twenty-one dash two fifty, county project number CCP two-two eleven eight dash twenty.
Mr. Chairman, this is a safety project to improve several safety hazards along that roadway, as well as resurface section of that roadway. I do recommend approval of this resolution.
Make a motion with approval, Adam L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. M. Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash thirty-seven, consider approval of Digital Information Cooperative Agreement and authorize the chairman to sign.
This agreement through Aldot is just basically, they're wanting our data, and they'll give us a little money for it. Pretty simple. They're wanting our parcel data and our air photography, which we've already had, already paid for, so they're not even pretty matching money that we have to pay out anymore, but they're going to give us something, eight thousand dollars or so.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam M.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Thank you so much, Ben. E. Consider setting public hearing on October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one to vacate a portion of Canal Road twelve sixty-six in Coleman, Alabama.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is to, this is also going to swap for a turnaround right away, so that we can accommodate our analysis of garbage trucks and any other services that use that rule.
Make a motion with approval, Adam M.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. O. Consider adoption of FY Twenty Twenty-One dash Twenty Twenty-Two Budget.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm very excited to present this to you.
Been a long time coming.
It has. We've had several individual conversations throughout the process. I want to highlight a few things that are in this budget. We've talked about individually, but just for the record, this budget includes several things that are priorities of the commission. And that includes roads. It includes revitalizing the pay scale for county employees to try to recruit and retain the best employees we can. And then it also includes a plan to really maintain our buildings and the assets that the county has. So at the first few pages of the budget, there's a description of what's in the budget, but the biggest issue is revitalization of the county pay scale. That's the biggest expenditure this year, or biggest change in expenditure. We're carrying over funds from last year that were allocated in what we were calling the restored Coleman County Roads account, and that is two million dollars last year. The remaining funds this year will be carried over as starting balance. So there have been several draft copies that I've talked to each one of you, and I want to individually on this. On this final copy, the road funds that will be carried over would be six hundred and eighteen thousand twenty-eight dollars. Previously, it was over a million, but the road department has been working really hard in the last several weeks, and they've drawn down against those funds. So that will be different from prior conversations that I've had with each, each one of you individually. There's not really any changes on the proposed budget. This budget is adopted at the fund level. So the sheet that's right after the narrative, the fund sheet, would be the official budget, and then the charts and graphs behind that will describe that. And then we'd have an itemized object, object list, line item list, just to help track it. So a couple of things that may stand out, the first chart, where it says FY Twenty Twenty-Two Budget, sixty-seven million, four eleven, nine ten. That's a little different than what we looked at before. I went back and I included the debt service on the new loan. That's only a three-year loan, so that'll be paid off in the next three, this year and the next two after that. So that increased the overall budget somewhat. This is the largest budget Coleman County Commission's ever had, and it really tries to address the priorities that the commission has set. So I would ask respectfully for an adoption of that.
I want to say to John and for Judy, thank y'all so much, because I know you've been working on this, the pay scale, for probably two years. And, you know, thank you for all the time you put into this, and, and I think it's going to make a difference for our employees and the citizens across Coleman County. So thank y'all so much for what y'all do.
Appreciate y'all. Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam O.
Yeah, we appreciate it, John. We know it's a lot of hard work putting this together and a lot of, a lot of back and forth. Why are we doing this? And why are we doing that?
It's a team effort.
You know what? Yeah. And hey, it, I never do like to say aye on this, on, on six, seven million dollars. You know what I'm saying? It's, I can't even fathom that. But anyway, I appreciate the hard work, too. I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. P. Consider renewal of health service agreement with Southern Health Partners for the Coleman County Sheriff's Office in the amount of seven hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight, seventy-six.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I've spoken with the sheriff on this, and this is continuing the same agreement that we have in place. It would be the twenty-four-hour nursing care. It's a three percent increase over the adjusted amount when we went to twenty-four-hour care last year. So it will be a three percent increase on that. The sheriff said that they're, they're pleased with the service they're getting, and so we recommend renewing this for another year.
Make a motion with approval, Adam T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Q. Consider one-year maintenance agreement with Johnston Technologies Incorporated for battery backup for the Coleman County Sheriff's Office in the amount of five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is, doesn't reach the amount of needing to be approved on the ten thousand dollar amount, but it is an agreement that would need to be signed. So really, we just ask for approval of the agreement and authorization for the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam K.
I'll second that motion.
Current language.
Yeah, yeah, I was supposed to say we need to.
The authorization to sign.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Hey, one quick thing I meant to mention. I'm sorry. Let me back up a second on the, on the budget. Are you going to post this on the website pretty quick?
I'll email it to you.
Yeah, yeah. If we can get it on there, because there'll be people asking about it, you know, about seeing the new budget.
Q. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. R. Consider and authorize the chairman to sign agreement with Willoughby Construction to connect to the pump station at the Agricultural Center.
This was an existing pump station that we have. Willoughby Construction is relocating to the incorporated area of the county. As such, they don't have a septic tank, and as part of a industry that can connect and have been given permission to connect by the City of Coleman. But in order to do so, they have to use the pump station. So we have an agreement with Willoughby with regard to payment for abuse, and also for, in the event that there's any future problems with it, or any maintenance expense, it addresses that as well.
Make a motion with approval, Adam R.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. S. Consider approval of employees' handbook changes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Our handbook that we're operating under, our employee handbook now, that was adopted back in February of twenty sixteen, it's been updated several times since then. What I like to do is look at that handbook annually to just clean up any changes that occur. As you all know, we have, we have changes that occur all along that are passed individually in the commission meetings. And so what we'd all like to do is, at least once a year, go through and, and take all of those changes that have already been approved and incorporate those into the handbook, so that our handbook, our handbook remains up to date all the time, and it doesn't become outdated. So we have actually thirteen updates this time. Most, all of those have already been approved over the past year. The last time we did the hand, update was in February of twenty twenty. So we've got a little over a year and a half, I guess, of updates. And I've sent you these, I think, several times over the past few weeks, every time something came in that, to, to update the handbook. So you all should have an updated copy of all that. So what I'd like to do is ask that you approve these changes, and then I will get those sent out to all employees that they can print out and put in their handbook to make sure it's up to date. We'll have an up-to-date copy. It's always going to be posted on the website along with these changes as well. So I just ask for your consideration and approval.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam S.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Thank you, Judy. Let's see here. T. Consider extending employees' relative vacation time above four hundred and eighty hours until February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Under our normal policies for vacation time, if employees have over four hundred and eighty hours at the end of the calendar year, December thirty-first, only four hundred and eighty hours of that rolls over. We'd like to make an exception this year. We, we do this occasionally. We had to do it last year, and we did it a few years back. We have department heads who have individuals that will be struggling to, to get that time in, and it would cause a hardship on the county if, if we, if, if they all took vacation in order to, to burn this time up. We've got, you know, road projects out there that, that have been impacted by all the rain and, and everything for the past few months, and so they're working hard to get those up. We've got Sheriff's Department employees that have been impacted by events over the past year, you know, and then, of course, we've all been impacted by COVID, when people have been out and employees have had to backfill behind that. So we just ask that the commission allow that vacation to continue, and then we'll do the cutoff at the end of February instead of December.
Make a motion with approval, Adam T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Thank you once again, Judy, for all your hard work. You authorized the chairman to sign scheduled service agreement with Crane for the HVAC system in the Coleman County Detention Center.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is just an annual agreement. It does require the signature of the property owner, which the commission will be the owner of the property. So I just wanted to get an authorization for the chairman to sign.
What is the price of that?
Sheriff, be out, please.
I got it, gentlemen.
You see the price there?
Yeah, sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Sixteen, six, fifty-eight, fifty-seven.
Make a motion with approval, Adam, of Tuskegee.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam U.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. V. Authorize Commissioner Watson to reappoint Brenda Scott to the Library Board with crust fees for a four-year term to expire nine thirty of twenty-five.
Make a motion with approval, Adam B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. D. Authorize the chairman to sign Alabama Department of Youth Services Long Term Detention Subsidy Contract for FY Twenty-Two.
This has been our longstanding, long-standing Detention Center in Tuskegee, in Tuskegee, Tuscumbia, and I appreciate the sheriff. I appreciate y'all always willing to transport without any compliance. So the Department of Youth Services just sent it directly to the Tennessee Valley Detention Center.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam U.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. K. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. X. Authorize the chairman and director, Stephanie Lawson, to sign agreement between Carts and the Coleman County Commission on Aging.
This will be the annual agreement for the Commission on Aging to contract with the Carts for service. Oh, I'm sorry. I said that in my head. Do you have any comments on this?
No. That TV said it happens a lot.
You don't have to. It's, it's the agreement for Carts, for the aging service, the Carts to use, for aging to use the Carts' service for transport to the detention centers.
Make a motion with approval, Adam X.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Y. Authorize the chairman to sign the Alabama Department of Youth Services Agent Authorize the Chairman to sign the Alabama Department of Youth Services Agency Grant Agreement for FY 2021-2022 in the amount of $481,088 for the benefit of Coen, Blount, Lauderdale, and Jackson Counties.
This is a community-based resource, or it's called Youth Advocate Program, and it serves all four of those counties. All the money is directed to Coen County in reimbursement for each of the counties. However, on a positive note, if some of the other counties don't use their money, we get to use those funds to give them a benefit also. And so, this is a grant we have about 12 years.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Z. Consider Approval of FY 2022 ACCA Workers' Compensation Self-Insurance Fund in the amount of $504,484.24.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the annual workers' compensation amount. It's actually a little decreased this year, so that will help our budget a little bit. We are happy with the way the ACCA CRS Fund is working.
Make a motion with approval, Adam Z.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. AA. Consider Approval and Authorize the Chairman and County Administrator John Bullard to sign the Narcog Title III Aging Contract and the Senior RX Contract.
This is the annual Narcog Agreement for the Aging Program. Requires the Chairman and requires an attest by the County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam AA.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. BB. Consider the Surplus of a 2012 Chevy Tahoe from the Coen County Sheriff's Office to be donated to the Coen County Fire Association.
Make a motion with approval, Adam BB.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. CC. Consider the Surplus of a 1985 GMC 6000 truck from the Sanitation Department to be sold on Gov. Deals.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam CC.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. BD. Consider the Surplus of a 23300 KW Caterpillar Generator from the Courthouse to be sold on Gov. Deals.
Make a motion with approval, Adam BD.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. EE. Consider the Surplus of a 1989 T2206 Oshkosh Snowplow from the Road Department to be sold on Gov. Deals.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam EE.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. LF. Consider the Surplus of a 1988 GMC 1500 truck from Parks to be sold on Gov. Deals.
Make a motion with approval, Adam, double F.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Excuse me, that's the wrong one. I'm on the wrong one, I apologize.
Double F.
Okay, that's right, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. GG. Consider the Surplus of a 2002 Chevy 1500 truck from the garage to be sold on Gov. Deals.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, Adam GG.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. HH. Consider the Surplus of a Hyster H60CLM Forklift from the Road Department to be sold on Gov. Deals.
Make a motion with approval, Adam, double H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Looks like we're going to, uh... Consider the Surplus of a 1985 Hell 700 Dump Truck from the Water Department to be sold on Gov. Deals.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion with approval, aye.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. JJ. Consider the Surplus of miscellaneous office furniture, filing cabinets, chairs, et cetera, from the Courthouse to be sold on Gov. Deals.
Make a motion with approval, Adam, double J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. KK. Consider the Purchase of Playground Equipment, which was like part, in the amount of $92,915.47 and authorize Chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to give you a little update on that. If we didn't have any of the grants, this piece of playground equipment we're looking at would be $147,000. But with the three grants that we got, it brings our cost of the county down to $68,487.47. And we're still working with one other, trying to get some grant money for that, so there's no confirmation in it. And on that grant, it's actually got to be installed by project finish before they reimburse us. So we're looking for additional $58,000. And this place, this one, has to be paid for by November 2nd, it'll be delivered by December 31st. So we can set the schedule if we want to start it on January 1st installation or whatever, so we can pick the install date.
We want to say one thing, you know, we know this equipment's needed, I think, but what we got is 30 years old.
Yes, sir, I meant to bring that in.
Yes, 30 years old equipment. And I appreciate John working with us, figuring out a way to, you know, approve our park and get this equipment. So thank you, John, for being awesome.
So are we approving $67,000 or $92,000? You said the...
Yeah, the total cost was $92,000, but then we got $12,000 since the last meeting, and that was what the cost was, because we was unsure of the grant. But we got $12,000 from Triple CDC, and then we got $12,435 from RC&amp;D. So that'll bring that $92,000 down to $68,487.47.
So we're approving $60.
Yes, sir.
We need to amend this.
Well, that's ship and installation and everything.
So it's $68,487.97?
Yes, sir. When we take the grants away from that, that's what...
You have to amend $68.
$68,487.97. And that was Triple CDC?
Yes, sir. And RC&amp;D. RC&amp;D. I mean, we'll have to, we'll get reimbursed that, so we will still have to, when we purchase it, write the check for $92, but that's going to bring our cost down to what it actually costs us.
So there actually is...
So you are actually proving the $92,000, but we'll get reimbursed at $24,435.
Yes. And this will come out of the general fund and not...
No, it's just a kind of tourism.
Okay, tourism fund, okay. All right, all right, yeah, that's what I was wanting to say.
So we're going back to the...
Yeah, going back.
So it is not subject to reimbursement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with approval, the $92,915.47.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. AL. Approve the Extended Years in the Amount of $32,500 for Water Damage Repairs at the Coen County Water Department by CH Harris Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, this is 100% reimbursable by insurance, but because it's over the $10,000 amount, we need to get it approved. There was a water leak at the Water Department, and they got that fixed, and it is an insurance claim. $32,500 was not subject to bid because it's public works and less than the public works law, but it is, we did get three quotes and this took the lowest.
Make a motion with approval, Adam, double A.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. MM. Extend Bid Number 1314 File and Scrub to Iran Company.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, all these material and installation are reviewed and be in line with current processes, and we recommend awarding this bid.